I call to order and welcome you to the Bradley County Board of Education Regular Meeting for May the 10th, 2022. Our first election, our first order of business is the election of officers. So at this time, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Cash.
So before we start the voting process, I want to read the information and the order of which things take place. First, we will open for nominations. Each nomination can have a second, but it is not mandatory. If there is only one candidate nominated, nominations are ceased and a motion can be requested that the nominee be appointed by acclamation. This motion must have a second and a roll call vote. Nominations will be closed once no more names are presented. Vote for each nomination in the order they were nominated. Nomination has to get majority from the board to win the seat. In event there is no majority, the nominee with the lowest votes is eliminated. Voting will continue with the remaining candidates in the order they were nominated. The majority vote will win the seat. A roll call vote will be used to cast a vote. And at this time, we are open for nominations for the Chairman of the Bradley County Board.
Dr. Cash, I'd like to say that we have had a list of officers, we've had a chairman, we've had a resigned faculty member, and we had a vice chairman and other officers. And it's my opinion, I've talked to TSB, who was our organization that we deal with, and I've talked to our lawyer, and they believe we do need to go through the formal process, do we? But I have no problem personally, and I think that the vice chairman is capable and all the people want to take place. So I make the respectful nomination, amend the lead to be chairman. And I also add to that, based on my advice from our lawyer, we do not need, because it's something that we need to meet what we need to get. And I would wait, now this following September 1, John and other board members here, if somebody else wants to, I mean, but Amanda said her, in my opinion, and I make the motion to amend the lead to our chairman, and I'll say.
We have a first and a second. Are there any other nominations? At this time, the nominations are ceased. I have a motion, I need a motion be requested that we appoint by acclamation, and I'll also need a second and a roll call vote. Do I have the motion to approve by acclamation? Second. Hearing an acclamation vote and a second, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 And at this time, it is my responsibility to turn it over to the chair. I do want to clarify one point of order with Mr. Bryson, if that's okay, Madam Chair. So you are at this time saying we leave the vice chair open at this.
According to our scope of attorney, we could, but there's no need to, because all the number means, like he said, he said you do what you wanted to do without a reason. But he said that's what I recommend, and I agree with him.
Do you need a motion? Yes, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the chair, and Madam Chair, I am recommending a motion and a second and a roll call vote on that recommendation. Do I have a motion that we hold off any other nominations until September or September four meeting?
I'll make that motion. Do we hold off until September before we come in?
May I clarify? Sure. That is part of it, but the other part is we leave the vice chair seat open and recommend.
And we leave the vice chair seat open.
Do we have a second? Second. Is there any discussions? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. I just want to take a moment to thank my fellow board members for their confidence for me to fill this seat until September. I promise to work hard and keep you all informed as much as possible. And also at this time, I want to recognize a couple of people that are in the audience. We have our finance director from the commission, I don't see him, oh, there he is, Marlon Blake. And then we have Sheriff Lawson sitting right next to him, and then we have our recently elected board member, Josh Taylor, who will take office here shortly. So we appreciate you being here. I want to introduce Amanda Refner. I'll let you do that, Dr. Cash. And at this time, we'd also like to recognize Amanda Refner. She will be our new executive assistant and board secretary for Bradley County Schools. Amanda. All right, so now we will do the invocation and pledge as Mr. Stan Gibson, pastor from Candy's Creek Baptist Church, will do the invocation, followed by the pledge to be led by Mr. Teddy Bryson.
Lord Jesus, we humbly come before you and are grateful for your love, and I pray that love is something that students will find in our county school system. I thank you for administrators and teachers that have loved my own kids in these last several years, and I pray that every student could experience that love. Lord, we do pray for the development of people socially and spiritually and academically. Lord, I thank you for my own experience here at Bradley High School and Bradley Junior, and I pray that you would give wisdom to this meeting. I thank you for our county, I thank you for taxpayers, I thank you for the opportunity to learn. I pray during discussions and budget discussions that you'll help us act wisely, and I pray that your love would radiate through our county. We pray this in your name, King Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Can you help everybody stand up? Luke, play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Director of Schools Evaluation. The board is required to do an annual evaluation of the Director of Schools. The process begins with the Director of Schools completing a self-evaluation. Her evaluation was shared with the board in early May. The board reviews her self-evaluation, and then each board member completes an evaluation on the director. Dr. Cash was evaluated on seven different standards and scored on a scale from one to five. The board secretary tallies all of those scores for a combined total to be presented to the board meeting. The summary of the board's score for Dr. Cash was 4.89. And also, I'll just take some, just a moment to read some of the comments from the board regarding her evaluation. One of them says, "Dr. Cash sustains a positive working relationship built on trust and transparency. Dr. Cash does an excellent job. She is much loved and respected in the community and in the school system. Dr. Cash upholds a favorable image for the school district and has developed a strong rapport with the school, community, and beyond. Since Dr. Cash is approachable, seeks input from the school board, and provides each board member with the needed information to make informed decisions. Dr. Cash is a visionary who is committed to shaping the future of Bradley County Schools and the students and families of the Bradley County community. It is a privilege to work with Dr. Cash." So I think that speaks volumes to the top of director that we have. At this time, do I have a motion to accept the Director of Schools Evaluation?
I make the motion that we accept the evaluation for Dr. Linda Cash.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussions or comments regarding the evaluation? Hearing none. At this time, we will, we will need to do a roll call vote on this one. So Ms. Phillips, will you please call the roll on this one?
Is it baby?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Director of Schools Contract. At the same time we do the evaluation, the board has the option to extend the Director of Schools contract by one year. Pursuant to state law, we cannot enter into a contract with the Director of Schools for more than four years at a time, but we can elect to extend it by one year. So nothing is changing in her contract other than this vote is to extend her contract by one year, which will make it a four-year contract.
I make a motion that we extend Dr. Linda Cash's contract by one year.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussions?
Does that mean?
Yes.
You didn't like getting rid of your caller?
Oh, yeah, that would be. We did not get rid of our caller. No.
Mr. Bryson, I didn't realize you described the director of schools. I just remember, and I'm sorry, that when she almost went. Dr. Cash, did you hear Mr. Bryson say he would pay your call? When they talked about on the telephone, and everybody said, "I will give her a million dollars, she doesn't want to..."
Are you giving her a million dollars also?
I'm sorry, you don't believe me, because I would not give her.
We're not giving her a million dollars, we're just making her stay another year.
I would give her a million dollars.
Any other discussions? We'll also need to do a roll call vote on this, Mrs. Patty.
Yes.
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 Okay, that motion passes. The next item on the consent is the Consent Agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to pull from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve consent.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussions? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. The next item on the agenda is persons requesting to address the board, Mrs. Patty. Okay, there was no one on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the Director of Schools Report. Dr. Cash.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is thank you to the board for your continued support, and one of the things that I will say that makes us stronger is this board and the way you pull together and work together. And it's okay for us to have different opinions because we always come to a consensus and we leave with remaining professional and friends, and that's what makes a good board, is that we can talk and work together. In the same sense, I want everybody to recognize that I'm only as good as the people that are around me. And so to all of my administrators, and to my principals, and my teachers, and my supervisors, it's just phenomenal to work with everybody every day. And every day is different, and it's fun to brainstorm together. And again, with that, we talked about the community, and you can see the sheriff here and many more. It is a community effort with everybody pulling together, and I want everybody to recognize and know that's not always the case with school systems and communities, so we really appreciate that. The second thing that I would like to say is we have some great news and congratulations. We have schools that are STEM designated schools, and I want to say that today Bradley Central High School was awarded the STEM designation from the State Department of Tennessee. In the same sense, they are joining Parkview, Waterville, and Charleston, and with that comes $90,000. So Bradley Central High School. That is a testament to the work that they do and the team and collaboration that Bradley Central High School has, $30,000. Parkview has 20, Waterville has 20, Charleston has 20. So all that hard work pays off, and we're looking forward to see the great things that happen with STEM in those schools. So we appreciate all that hard work from them. Just some graduation reminders. Thursday, May 12th, Walker Valley High School Graduation is at 7:30. Friday, May 13th, Virtual School is at OMS at 5:00. Saturday, May 14th, Goal is at OMS at 5:00. And Saturday, May 14th is Bradley Central High School at 7:30. And do we want to make any other announcements at this time? So just keep those on your calendars for everyone, and then I. Dr. Cash, I'm sorry, but with Goal Academy at McCoy Middle School being at 5:00, I'm assuming 6:30 maybe? Are we, I'm talking about going from McCoy Middle to Bradley Central. Yeah, Bradley is at 7:30, so we basically leave right from there and go straight to Bradley. So, yeah. Thank you for asking that. Any questions or anything about those other than Ms. Baby? And then finally, I would like to recognize Bradley County Schools and the Sheriff's Office. We want to recognize our SR Officer Craig Frost. And at this time, I would like to turn that over to our Principal, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. At least I acknowledge I appreciate the fact that Sheriff Lawson allowed us to have Craig Frost. Craig Frost is an outstanding school resource officer, but he's not only an outstanding school resource officer, he's an outstanding foster parent. And he's also an outstanding softball coach. A lot of people don't know, he's our softball coach and also is the assistant softball coach at Bradley Central, and we're very proud of him. On the day that we had our issue with potentially a threat, he did an outstanding job, and he was right on top of it as commanding officer in charge of the situation. I want to also say how much I appreciate my administrative team in what they were doing and how they stayed on top of it. And just, I felt like when you have a situation like that, you have to grab it and wrestle it and fight it and do everything you can to keep it intact and keep it organized. And I felt like that we did that as best we could, and I just thought Craig, he did an outstanding job leading us through that, and I want to thank you for that.
Officer Frost, will you please come up and please?
So one of the things that we want to say to you is that trust is a big factor with our SRO officers and the work that you, actually the work that all the SRO officers, and we just want to thank you personally for, because that could have been a situation that turned into something that got bigger, and it did not. So we wanted to personally thank you for that and let you know that we care very deeply about you and your work, and thank you for all that you do. And then we would actually like to ask our sheriff to also say a few words about you and then let you address the board.
No, no.
Yeah, thanks, Sheriff Lawson.
Craig Frost, let me say this about him, and we try to place SROs in schools that fit the situation. It's not right to put, and years ago, I guess it was your weakest, you looked at, at people that wanted to go. Now you've got to put people in schools that are able to respond. If we don't pick and choose people that are ready to respond, we're doing a disservice to this county and our most precious assets in schools. Craig Frost came to work alongside me years ago, and he was at the sheriff's office, and then I was Drug Task Force Director, and he worked for me then. When I was elected sheriff, he wanted to come to the sheriff's office. In fact, his daughter, who's at Lee now, actually I think gave me a call and said, "Would you hire my daddy?" And so her and me had kind of a relationship, because I remember at the Christmas party at the Drug Task Force, and I was addressing them, and I said, "Is any of the family want to ask me anything?" And I remember her saying, as Chris said, and I guess she was what, 11, 12 years old then, and she said, "Could you make my daddy come home tonight?" So I'll always remember that, that Craig Frost is a worker, and I wouldn't have to make people, you've got to go home, you've got to never forget you've got family. But he's a blessing to me, he's a blessing to be in that school. I think the principal said it best, he's a good fit, and when you find a good fit and love it. Let me say this, they have a relationship, their SROs generally, and they fight me over their SROs. And if they take advancement or promotion generally, they're mad at me for taking that, but it's okay. I'm blessed to have this kind of people around me. What did you say? You surround yourself with the best people you can find. And I always say, if you think I'm the smartest person in the sheriff's office, you're a trouble. I go out and find the smartest people to surround myself with, and they serve me well, and they serve you well, and I believe the relationship we have with the schools, and they serve the schools well in this entire county. Thank you.
Well, I really don't know what to say, but I knew when he became sheriff, I knew I had to go work for him. And I went from being a deputy to doing drug work and stuff in Chattanooga on the task force, but I wish 10 years, 15 years ago, I knew about this job, because I'd be one of those lifers if I could do it. I love the kids, I love the coaches, I love my administration. I can't ask for, I can't ask for a better place to work. I appreciate you all recognizing me. I do. Thank you.
We thank you for your service.
Thank you. Officer Frost, I'm sure you know by now my son Axel is at Lake Forest.
Now, how does he know that?
Obviously. I'm sure, there's many reasons why. But as a mother, I want to thank you for what you did that day. I wasn't nervous, you know, it never crossed my mind that my child was going to be safe there. When he came home from school, I asked him, you know, "Were you nervous or were you scared?" He said, "No, not really." He said, "The only thing that concerned me was when I spoke to Officer Stone, and he had a stone-cold look on his face, and he said, 'Hey, Axel.'" He said, "I knew something was serious." So I appreciate that. As a mother, I had parents texting and calling me, and, you know, I assured them everything was fine, and, you know, you'll never know as a mother, you know, what that means, so I, you know, I appreciate it. Does anyone else have anything that I would like to say?
I just want to say thank you. I mean, it is, it is so, as a principal and as an administrator and teachers, comforting to know that someone like you is in that school building, and we just appreciate everything that you did. Thank you, and continue to do.
I'd like to say, I appreciate you, appreciate Sheriff, I appreciate all SROs throughout. You were one SRO who brought my place at the right time, and you put that sheriff house home, and you made sure that it's doing work, and you have a dangerous job, it don't matter, if you adapt that young, and I appreciate what you all have been doing, everyone. Thank you.
I just thank you.
You just never know until you got to have it. And just like Sheriff Lawson said, you've got to have someone that's on, that's ready. And I just ready at the school, ready on the softball field. But most important, like Sheriff Lawson said, ready at home. And it's good to see a man that understands all three. We appreciate your service.
Thank you. All right, moving on, the next item on our agenda is the general purpose school budget. Ms. Susan Wilkett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, I'm not going to bore you with everything that we covered on the work session the other night. However, there were a couple of slides that if you will allow me to share again, simply because we don't always have a lot of educators that are able to watch the work session, and I want them to be fully aware of what this board and what the district has done in this budget, if you so choose to vote it through tonight. And Dr. Lovegood actually made a request for one of these slides, and then I just also listed the bullet points of kind of the high points of the budget. And of course, if you have any other questions or any slides that you'd like for us to cover again, we'll be more than happy to do that. But this is something that I try to share every year because I think it's very eye-opening, at least to me it is, that when you look at, what we're projecting tonight is close to an 89 million dollar budget. And when you look at the fact that we use 81% of that for salary and benefits, I hope that our teachers and staff realize what importance we place on pay and benefits, and that we strive all the time, anytime we have money come in, we are always looking at a way to give that, stretch that as far as we can for our educators. But when you look at that, you can also see everything else we spend money on. You know, we've got contracted services, which includes our bus drivers, that includes our cleaning service, a few other small services. You can see supplies and materials take up 3%, 3% of an almost 89 million dollar budget. You see even our utilities, which are going sky-high right now, still just make up about 3%. And our capital outline, which we're going to propose that we put extra money in this year, is still just at 4%. What do we want you to get from that? Well, we want you to get a couple of things. We want you to see, number one, how important we feel it is to give you competitive pay and benefit packages. But I also hope that you can see in that big pie, how little each one of those other items take up space. So when we're looking to say, well, sometimes we get feedback, well, why can't you not do this and put in salaries? You can see that when we start, when we start adjusting those small pieces of the pie, it does very little to help that 81% salary benefits because it is such a huge piece. So I just always like to show that because I just think it hopefully gives people an understanding of how much we are putting into their salary and benefits and how hard we work. We never have enough to give teachers what we think they deserve, but we really do work as hard as we can to do that. Do you have any questions on that slide before I move on?
The reason I, I'm sorry, Susan, one, you've done an excellent job, and appreciate you and your team. Y'all are awesome, and even what you've gone through, the family stuff, Dr. Cash, the team is unbelievable. And the reason I asked Susan to do this, and I'm sorry, we went to high school together, I pointed out, she's a great basketball player, too, a very end, by the way. But the reason I asked to have that slide like that, I think that says a lot. If you have numbers, sometimes it gets lost, but that picture says a lot about how much we really depend on teachers and how there are frontline folks, how they're meeting the needs of students in an ever-changing world. You think about it, intellectual knowledge has doubled every seven months now. I came here, seven years ago, I think it was about 15, 18 months, and it's just unbelievable how much students can learn more than sooner. And we have to have teachers that are related to students, related to parents, and we're trying our best, and it's great to be a partner and a director of schools to try to take care of our teachers.
Thank you. I appreciate you asking for that. Is there anything else before we move on? Okay. So here's our budget highlights for this year. We are funding a step raise which costs the system about half a million dollars. We're funding a 4% across the board raise for all salaried employees.
raise for all salaried employees, costing approximately $3,230,030. We're funding and adopting a new nurse scale. Um, the scale before the raise would range from 32,000 to top out at 42,000. Um, the cost was approximately $95,000. But a 4% raise applied to that would now make that range 33,280 and top out at 43,680. We are also funding and adopting a new subscale. I did not include all of that detailed information. I'll be glad to if you want to relook at that. But everyone here knows, whether you're an administrator, a teacher, or a principal, that we have been struggling since COVID to keep substitutes. And so we have adopted a new subscale that we hope is going to facilitate you in that effort. We're funding a 2.5% health insurance increase. Uh, we still don't know that that's what the increase will be. Um, but that's what it was this year. So we went ahead and built that in. It's going to cost us about $152,000. We actually received a cut in the retirement rate for certified legacy employees. So that saved the system approximately $180,000. And then we have an increase to operations, maintenance, and transportation budgets and several other line items due to the opening of the Pice Center and to inflation. Um, we are seeing huge increases of course, anything with equipment, uh, any kind of fuel that's, you know, tires, anything like that is going up very high. So we have built in a cushion for that. We are also funding a total of 2.8 million dollars for capital outlay. And, uh, I'll just quickly mention those. But our building improvements, which were school or principal requests and maintenance requests, is a million, 25,451. Our Bank of America energy payment, that's where we put in all the new windows, doors, AC several years ago. That's our required payment, 424,500. Bradley Central High School, the science wing architect fees, this will finish up those. Hopewell Road expansion, we are allocating $415,000 for that. $350,000 for computer refresh. And then because our BEP number came in um, higher than we expected, after we put extra money towards salaries, we are a little bit anxious that that final number in July will not, um, hold. So we thought, let's put a half a million dollars in capital outlay. And if that number holds, we will get back with the capital outlay committee and we will go back to the school recommendations and we will try to take care of some more of those capital outlay requests. Any questions on that? Yes?
Every school recommends something out of capital outlay.
Correct.
More than something.
Yes. And, and to be honest with you, Mr. Bryson, um, Dr. Cash and the committee, they, they look at all of that, almost side by side, and they try to be very, very fair in allocating, um, the funds. Um, sometimes they won't be exact because of what they're asking for, but we try really, really hard to be fair across the board on that. And that is it. So if you have any questions, we'd be more than glad to field that. Yes.
And our, our fund balance, it doesn't walk within that much money. And do you and our Dr. Cash have recommendations of how we ought to handle that? Not that we have, we could both do so differently, but what do you recommend, our and Dr. Cash together?
And I, I hit that slide. I can pull it up if we need to. But I, I will tell you currently, like right now today, if you looked at our trial balance, um, budget to budget, we've got about a 7% fund balance currently. However, uh, because we have been good stewards of our money and because sales taxes come in higher this year than we anticipated, once we roll our year, and what, what basically that means for anybody that's not accounting, you know, minded, um, what happens is at the end of the year, when we do our year end, you take any revenue that we had come in over what we projected and any expenditures that came in less than what we projected, that's basically called an excess for the year. And when we roll the books, everything zeros back out and whatever was over in revenue or under in expenditures increases our fund balance. So we are anticipating on July 1, that fund balance to go from 7% to about 12%. Now that equates to about $10 million. And we realize that that's a little high. However, Dr. Cash and I have talked, we have, um, we've looked at everything we know to look at as far as how to protect the district. And we feel like at least for now, we are recommending leaving it that high. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, we've got several projects going that we've got to complete. And we do not want to get held and not have money to complete those projects. Uh, just to name a few, we've got Pi that we're about to finish up. We've got the Hopewell project that we're about to finish up. Um, so things like that, we're looking at closely. Another thing that we have to keep in mind is even though we are projecting an increase in sales tax that is pretty substantial, we are cautiously optimistic on that. And my finance friend from the finance committee will, will I think attest to that. We, we talk a lot about this, that, um, we are not sure that sales tax number will hold because of the economy. We are, um, a little worried that we're, we're not worried about inflation because we're already there. But many times following inflation is what they call stagflation. And then from there, you go into a recession. And if that happens, our sales tax may either plateau or bottom out. What we want to do is make sure if that happens in the middle of a year, that we have funds available, that we can fund what we expect a sales tax to fund. We will have a fund balance healthy enough to do that. Does that help?
Yes.
That's the answer.
Yes. And Dr. Cash?
If you can forecast all that, you're unbelievable.
Madam Chair, and I would also like to say, when we get to a point where we really do, uh, feel like we've got, uh, numbers that we can work with, what our recommendation to the board would be to go back into that, that, uh, capital outlay request because there's some big ticket items still sitting out there. We've got a roof at Oakley Middle that, uh, is probably over a million dollars to, to replace and repair. So we've got big ticket items that we're holding. And I think it would be responsible to look at those big ticket items and take care because I, that the, the schools do a lot. But those are items that I believe is the responsibility of the board. And they're, they're, the ticket items are so high that, that they really could not do that. So just reminding, you know, we are in a holding pattern because we don't know what the economy is going to do. Um, and that's just good stewards of your money and good planning, in our opinion. Of course, the board can make a different decision. Um, but, uh, we respectfully ask to hold at this time. It's kind of a fair assumption, I think that is.
It's not a question, but when we had the pandemic or whatever, what was our, our presentation?
Well, uh, uh, when I looked at last year, we are actually projecting a smaller fund balance July 1 of this year than we did last year. Uh, and I don't have the number, I, I can't give you that right off the top of my head. But, um, typically, I will tell you this, that Dr. Cash and I, thank goodness, we are usually on the same page on this because just a reminder, the state requires us to have a 3% fund balance. The, um, the county recommends that we keep at least a 5% fund balance. Okay? Dr. Cash and I feel really good about a 7%. That's really, to use a word, the sweet spot. That's really kind of where we like to stay. Because 7% of like an 80 million dollar budget, you know, that's like 5.6 million dollars. That would only make one payroll. And we really don't feel comfortable going much lower than that, at least not for an extended period of time. So 7%, if we didn't have all this other stuff going on, that would probably be more where we would be landing. Do you, do you agree with that? But because of the things that we just talked about, we would like to keep it higher right now if the board agrees. And then we can always come back and amend that budget at, at any time that you see a need.
I don't have literal problem with 7%. My house, we need to have a fund, a fund balance for a rainy day. But if I'm out there, they're talking about sometime, if there's projects that need to be done, like that roof or whatever, it's a lot better to do it when you got, what's we know, we got that percentage, or we've got something else. Better to do it when you've got the money.
Absolutely.
I might always have that.
Absolutely.
Mr. Bryson, my recommendation would be once we know that our numbers will hold, um, that we send out to the board. Because I was on the capital outlay committee and although we did approve over, you know, well over a million dollars, there were millions of dollars in capital outlay because that were not approved.
That's correct.
Because we did not feel comfortable, you know, paying, you know, taking care of all those things. So my recommendation would be once you and Dr. Cash feel comfortable that these numbers are steady, that we send all of the requests that were not fulfilled out to the board to review. And then maybe we can come back and make a decision on how to move forward with spending.
Do you have an idea what that would be?
Well, I was just going to address what Madam Chair said about, keep in mind, we did put $500,000 more into capital outlay at the last minute. And the reason it was last minute, we did not get our BEP number till right before the work session. And it was about a million dollars more than what we expected. And so that money is already sitting there. We wouldn't even have to go into fund balance or do an amendment to use, to go back to that capital outlay request. There's 500,000 sitting there that is, um, basically unassigned. So, but then if there were other projects like a roof or like other things that were great, big ticket items, you're right. Now is the time to get our schools in the greatest shape that they've been in, in my tenure, not just in this office, but probably since I've been with Bradley County Schools. This is the time to do that. And then we need to make every stride to maintain that moving forward.
What's the difference? I'm sorry. What's the difference? You said about 7 billion, uh, 6 million dollars to 10 million dollars is about a $4 million difference between 7% to 12%? And so I think we're smart. I think in July, you're going to know BEP holds. You're going to be aware of a little bit more. I'm not sure we're going to be aware of the economy, the country at that time, frankly. But we'll have our true numbers, like Dr. Cash and like that, Susan, y'all said. And I agree with Chairwoman, uh, Miss Lee, is to know where we are, a true evaluation of where we are, and then get the, get the needs and make some good decisions.
All right. At this time, if there are no more discussions, um, we want to do a roll call on the general purpose budget. But I will need a motion to approve the general purpose school budget.
I make a motion to approve Bradley County Board of Education general purpose school fund budget for 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
At this time, is there any more discussions? If not, Ms. County, will you do a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the education capital projects budget for year 2023. Ms. Susan Wilkett.
Thank you. Um, so if you will remember, when we were in the process of building Light Course, is basically when we started this fund. It is a fund that has never been intended to be a permanent, um, fund. It is only for capital projects. And so now we are down, the only thing that is in here is the Pice Center. And if you'll look, um, I think you have that in front of you. If you will look at the 2223 column, you can look down through there and we basically just estimated what we think is going to come in in revenue. And then you will see the reserves underneath that, the 2,139,947. That's actually the fund balance that's carried over in that fund. So you'll see that the total available funds that we feel are, are left in there is 5,926,683. You can also see that we expect to spend every dime of that. So somewhere in the next year, but no later than June 30 of 23, we expect this to go to zero, which this is what's very different from our general purpose. But again, we expect to close this out this year, the, the coming year. Um, so there's not a lot in here. There's, there's only a few accounts that we're allowed to use in this particular fund. But if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Does anyone have any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the education capital projects budget for year 2023?
Got the second?
Second.
Okay. Um, any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. The next item on our agenda is the central cafeteria fund. Uh, Ms. Emily Brown.
Yes, it's a pleasure to come before the board. Um, I'm presenting the budget for the cafeteria fund for next school year. And this is my favorite part to talk about. My ladies and gentlemen in the cafeteria, they do such a good job. And they serve over 2 million meals in one school year. So
How many?
2 million meals in one school year.
Wow.
Breakfast and lunch. So they do amazing jobs. And I come, I've come today to talk about raises for our cafeteria employees and a raise that would increase them by 15% for the hourly, hourly rate. And so I'm just glad to be here for that today.
Um, Ms. Brown, would you mind just giving us just a little brief overview of, as to what the starting pay was for a first, you know, I guess zero to three year?
So the starting pay would be $9.58 and it would go to $11 for starting pay for our hourly employees.
You read that part, you write my pay up in their tenure?
Yes, sir.
The same amount?
Yes, sir. About 15%. Everybody would receive the same, the same raise.
So in addition to that raise, they'll also receive on top of that, the 4%?
No, they would receive the 15%.
They're receiving 15%. So that doesn't include the 4% raise that?
Is that included?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Brown?
We would also be raising subpay to $10 an hour. And so we'll replace with that.
Several of them retired at the retirements. So maybe that'll make some of them come back.
Very proud. We had one manager retire 39 years. One 30 years. And so once we get on, they don't want to leave. Very sad to see them retire.
All right. Um, do I have a motion that we approve the central cafeteria fund?
I make a motion to approve the central cafeteria fund for the 2223 budget.
I have a second. Mr. Bryson, any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Be glad for you guys to come eat lunch with us. We'd like to serve you anytime.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on. The next item on our agenda is budget amendments. Um, that will be Ms. Susan Wilkett.
Thank you again. Um, the first batch of amendments that we have, I will, um, address them as a summary. But if you have any questions on the specifics, we can go through them one by one. Um, but we, usually at the end of the year, we have to do some true votes. And so what we've got in this first, um, set of budget amendments that go from 44 to 49, we've got 10 care money. If you remember, 10 care money, we collect, but we have to pull it out of our fund balance in order for them to use it. So that's what, when you're seeing the 10 care part, whether it's for SPED or for nurses, that's what that is. It's revenue that's come in through 10 care and we are just pulling it from fund balance so that they can spend it. Uh, another thing that you're going to notice in there is there's a, a transfer from one account to another, and that's purely just a state requirement. And then we had a couple of payroll adjustments because we had changes in personnel. And so we didn't have enough salary to cover it because we didn't know it was going to happen. So we just had to true that out. Um, so I'm asking the board to approve that section of amendments. Do you have any questions on that?
Is this 13, 14, and 15? Are you doing all of those or just?
Just 13.
Just 13?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we approve, um, budget amendment 141? Do I have a motion that we approve budget amendment one forty-one?
Motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number fourteen is another budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am. And that is our grant for our summer learning camps. That's all that's on that one, and we're asking that you approve that one.
Do I have a motion that we approve the summer grants budget amendment? I have a motion by Mr. Bryson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Do I have any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is another budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am, and this is basically just our true bets for one seventy-seven, and it's, everything on here is S. money that just had to be moved around.
Do I have a motion that we approve budget amendment one seventy-seven?
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Bryson. Any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkett.
The next item on our agenda is the fundraiser permission for the football program at Lake Forest Middle School. At this time, I will ask the Lake Forest Middle School coaches to come forward.
Thank you.
Let's say thank you guys for allowing us to come before you tonight. This is a new experience for both of us, but at the same time, just wanted to say thank you as we go on this endeavor.
Dr. Cash, members of the board, my name is Josh Hyman.
I'm Josh Gregory.
And we're here to represent the Lake Forest Middle School football program. The last ten years, we've worked really hard to change the culture of our football program, and our next step is to invest in a facility that will showcase our talented athletes. We're here to ask permission to begin fundraising to install a new set of bleachers at Lake Forest Middle School, that will not only benefit the football program, but the entire school, including boys and girls soccer, track, and our P.E. department. The upgrades to our facilities would address our current bleacher problem, as well as our current track. The average attendance to a Lake Forest football game is right around a thousand, and when we play crosstown rivals, can even reach upward of two thousand. The current bleachers seat about three hundred and fifty, our student body is twelve hundred, and so our current bleachers body couldn't fit a third of our student body. We currently do not have an outdoor facility to feed or seat our student body, this sort of came in handy for us on April 27th, when we had a threat on campus and could have put all of our students in a central location, and then we'd communicate with the administration and police officers. Bleachers will directly affect any event that's held at Lake Forest Middle School. This upgrade to the bleachers will make them ADA compliant. The current bleachers are very old and outdated, we've had people fall climbing up the bleachers due to the eighteen to twenty-four inch height of the slab, the concrete slabs. On the other side of the field, one of the sets of bleachers is resting on center blocks.
If you look at page two in the document we gave you, there is pictures of both of those things, bleachers, the concrete bleachers that have been there since it was trued in the seventies, are there, and on the other side, I take a picture to the bottom, there's a set of bleachers that is resting on concrete center blocks. As far as the track goes, during this process of replacing our bleachers, our goal is to also fix our track. The current track is missing spots, has spots that have been paved or patched incorrectly, and are hazards for our track team. Repaving the track would allow our track team to have a safe place to operate, to prepare for track meets. During this process, we'll also put two concrete pads, one for shop foot, and one for discus. Thanks to our principal, Mr. Stevenson, Amanda Lee, Lynn Vols, and Kyle Page, and several others who have helped us along the way, we have come up to a project of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to include installation, electric, concrete, and other construction necessities. This includes the demolition and removal of the old bleachers as well.
We understand that the task that we are taking on is ambitious, but we are a very ambitious school. Our students and our families would benefit from this upgrade, and we are committed to seeing this through. And we are here to request permission to begin raising funds.
Oh, the picture at the top of page, page two?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that it?
That would be what ours would look like, yes, ma'am. That is not our specific rendering, but it would be smaller than that, ours would only be a ten bro, that one there is much larger than that, but it would be that style of bleacher, it would be an aluminum bleacher.
Okay, what about the press box?
The press box is the idea right now, I don't know if you've been to Lake Forest recently, but we're moving our home side to the wood side.
Okay.
And putting a press box on top of the bleachers as well.
It is an eight by thirty press box.
So, it would have four rooms that would allow us to do, like we've had the radio out, and some things, that we'd have room to come in into the press box, broadcast games. The last time they cannot broadcast our game, they set in bleachers.
Okay.
And so, this would give them a place to even broadcast games, considering the size of ours.
Interesting. I will say that when both coaches started this project, they did contact me, since I am their board member, and asked me to come out and listen to their proposal, and I appreciate their enthusiasm. There were two guys who said they didn't know how to fundraise, they just, you know, and so they were looking for direction, and so I had them contact the greatest fundraiser of all time, Ms. Lynn Vols, and so she has sat down with the both of them, vetted, you know, their proposal, they have the support of Mr. Stevenson, and they're not asking the board for any money, they are just asking for permission to begin raising money and raising funds for this project. So, that is all they're doing, is coming to the board to ask for permission for them to begin raising funds. So, does anyone, well, we'll take a motion, and then we'll have discussions. So, do I have a motion that we approve allowing Lake Forest Football to begin raising funds for new bleachers?
If there was a tax on the project, I'm going to give the chance to make a motion approve. Have an opportunity. But if there's no liability, they're just raising funds.
Second. Okay, Ms. Cash, in a second, and do we have any discussions? Mr. Wilkett, Dr. Wilkett?
One, y'all have done an excellent job, the culture of Lake Forest and the football program, you know, it's just, y'all have done a great job, year in and year out, y'all have kids who know what to do, you've coached them up well, and you've done a young man's work, if you will. It's interesting to me, I'm just kind of curious, I'd like to kind of have an idea, some of us have all talked about this a little bit, side, you know, every now and then, just kind of checking on how many, how many have fundraisers at schools, because you have to raise so much money to help the schools, and whether it be the high school, elementary school, middle schools, I'd be curious to see, I know, Dr. Cash, you have the labor to approve, or to have, am I wrong, or am I wrong, you have to, you have to come by you to get this to us, is that how it goes, that's the process? And I can't imagine all the fundraising things that you have to see come through across your desk, it'd be curious to see how much fundraising we have to do at each school to new school, and how much it comes back to mamas, and daddies, and uncles, and aunts, and grandparents. You know, we think we, I mean, we have this, we've gone from seven percent to twelve percent, if there's something we can do this next year to help not only the capital outlay, but help us parents and grandparents with not having to fundraise so much this next year, because the economy is tough. And so, and how much money would that, what would that look like, Ms. Chair? As far as, it would look like, I'm with Dr. Cash, all the amount of money we have to fundraise is pretty.
I would say that in the state rules and regs, they, each school is only allowed to have two school-wide fundraisers. So, when you're talking about the big fundraisers, there are two at each school, and that is mandated by the state of Tennessee. However, especially at the middle and high schools, they have so many clubs and sports, and that each one of those organizations, along with them having PTOs and booster clubs, they tend to move in a different direction, because each one of their clubs, sports, have different needs and different sites. The permission to raise funds for athletics, actually, if it's by, from those booster clubs, it does not come through the Board of Education. That is, they're independent, and they run them through there. Now, we have a fabulous group of administrators that tries to hold the line, but I would venture to say that without the support of those families, we would not have the sources that we have. But I also want to say that we go above and beyond. If we were a bare bones district, you wouldn't see the facilities, and you wouldn't see, but this community invests pretty heavily in our sports, and in our clubs, and with that, there's a pride and ownership, but I can't imagine that without them, we could do the things that we do. I don't know how much concession stands make, but it is like, every, I don't know, an event that we're not selling concessions, and those go back into the sports, along with the camps and things. But I just want to clarify, there are two school-wide fundraisers that are allowed, and that is all. And then they're independent, mostly at the high school and middle school, with independent clubs and pieces like that. The clubs do come through for us to address, and they're not, very few have I turned down. Most of them, from a club standpoint, are minor, they're not, they're raising a couple thousand dollars or five thousand, but your sports, and your traveling, pieces like Revolution, and some of the big things, they're traveling and doing some big things, and they do raise a tremendous amount of money.
So, with booster, booster clubs, PTOs, PTAs, those are all separate accounts, they do not funnel through your office or through this school?
Yes, ma'am, and again, like I said, the work session, the Board of Education, the, what you guys approved is a state audit, which is pretty intense. She came this past week, and she informed me she'll be here from September to probably November, so it's pretty intense. And then at the school level, those are local audits, and they do look at all of those books, and then they'll come back in.
If this board were to decide to do something later on, it would come under that scrutiny.
It, they would, if there are large sums of money being shifted and moved, they start, they start looking to be where it goes, and they start asking for receipts, and all of those pieces just being.
A typical audit.
A typical audit.
If you've got any, I'm not sure if it's, I'm working with.
Yes, sir.
We've expressed an interest in even the lowest.
We've talked to some people, we've kind of waited for approval from this board first in order to make some, the bigger phone calls, I would say, just because we didn't want to, we wanted to be, we don't want to do a cart before the horse. And so, we've talked to some smaller companies that have expressed interest in investing in us, but as well, like we don't want to go in to speak to somebody without your approval.
Madam Chair?
I will also say, one of the, it is a phenomenon, I'm sure there's some psychological study out there, but when it comes to sports in particular, people, ladies, they love to give, I mean, it's like magic, I don't know, I mean, you know, I can't raise money for a roof, but you guys can raise money in a way that no one else does, and it's that support, and I think it links back to, they see those kids on the field, they see those kids playing, and there's a community connection to those kids. And when I go to the football games, especially the softball and the baseball, there are generations of families there that are still supporting. So, Ms. Wilkett is right, we fundraise a lot in Bradley County, to be honest with you, I don't think it's to the extent that it is in some counties that I've been in, because I think we have a pretty specific, just like you guys are coming and saying, we want bleachers, we want, and it's so specific, that I think that helps us tremendously when we do go to ask, there's a level of trust. So, I hope that we can support you, I hope that if there's anything that we can do to help, that we'll be able to. I, again, recommend that we, as a board, as we've already suggested, we go back to, currently in this year, we go back to our capital outlay request for each school, so that's ambitious, I can't wait to see y'all again, if this board did y'all that. So, anyway, I think that's amazing, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're about to fundraise.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the new school sign for Hopwell, Ms. Elizabeth Keller.
Good evening, you have a photo in front of you already, and if you've been by Hopwell lately, you may be looking at that photo and thinking, this looks really familiar.
That's right, right.
And that is because, that is the shell of our current school sign, and what I am requesting your permission to do is to replace the current area where we slide letters in, and we stand out there, and we take a couple of hours, every time that we want to change the sign out and have a different message, it's a rather arduous process, where you have to prop the lid up on sticks, and you do all these things to try to change out the message. So, we would be replacing that section of the sign with an LED display screen. It would allow us to program graphics, to change the message frequently, or it to take only a matter of a few minutes worth of programming time versus several hours standing out there in what might be bad weather or other conditions. So, we do think it will make a big difference in our ability to communicate in yet another beneficial way. One of the things that we have found is that you can't have too many different ways of communicating, and so although we already use a number of avenues, we feel like we're really missing an opportunity in our current sign. We don't need your money, we just need your permission.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Keller?
Twenty-four thousand dollars. But it will bring us the best availability in graphics, full color. I did discuss options on cheaper prices, and the gentleman said, you don't want your sign to look like a dated or outdated version of technology when it's only a month old. And he said, I think you'll regret if you go with just one color, which would have saved us a few thousand dollars. Wouldn't have saved a lot, unfortunately, even the one color sign is still really pricey.
I have a question, that we can allow Hopwell School to do this new sign, which I'm going to stick while I'm having, I think it'll be exciting.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second, any more discussions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Walker Valley High School JROTC program, Ms. Vicki Bailey.
Yes, about a week ago, I had the opportunity to go to Walker Valley and talk with Dr. Bell and Mr. Green, and it is really exciting what they're telling me about a program that they want to start at Walker Valley High School. It's a Navy JROTC program, and I may be wrong, Dr. Cash, but I think Walker Valley is probably the, maybe the only high school without this type of a program in this area, I guess. And they also want it to have a STEM focus, and Mr. Green is here, would it be okay, Ms. Vicki speaks to the project?
Thank you guys for letting me address you. Dr. Bell's at senior night tonight, so she wasn't going to be here, but I'm going to read just a statement from her, and if I have any questions, I'm able to answer. Walker Valley High School is seeking the board's approval to move forward with applying to host a Navy JROTC unit. Should the application be approved, the board would be required to sign a promissory note to pay half the salaries of one retired officer and one senior enlisted to act as instructors for the program. If approved, our plan is to house the unit in a portable building, which we have been told is satisfactory. The representatives that we have talked with from the Navy speak very favorably of Walker Valley's location, student population, and focused on STEM-based learning initiatives. We are very excited about the prospects of adding this opportunity for our students, as we focus on the leadership aligned with college and career readiness.
You may have said this, but we also talked about the facility.
Yes, we have a portable facility that we would use for R OTC. This is, what we're asking for is simply to apply, but before we get applied, we're going to let you guys know about the funding of half the salary of two instructors. And so, as we work through the application process, there'll be more information. And so as we work through the application process, there'll be more information, but we haven't even officially applied yet before we present it to the board.
Dr. Cash, you are, Mr. Green, about, you said a half. So are there federal funds for ROTC, or how is that?
Do you, do you remember, Ms. Bailey, that very little sliver in Ms. Willcutt's slide? She said, this is federal?
Yes.
That's, that's what that is. That's the federal funds that come for ROTC. There is, they provide, is it 50%? Is it 50/50? So they provide 50% of the salary, and then the Board of Education is expected to pick up the next 50. And for me personally, the gains that our students make in those programs, it would be well worth the investment. I don't know how everybody else feels, but it is, I wish every kid could go through ROTC.
Yeah. But right now, Dr. Bell, you and Dr. Bell are just asking for approval from the board to pursue the application process, and then you'll come back to the board once that's completed and you're accepted? How does that work?
Yes ma'am. We are sitting on go with the application complete, it's just not been submitted yet.
Okay.
Then if we're accepted, I imagine we could come back before the board to give you more specifics.
Then I make a motion to allow Walker Valley High School to pursue the Navy JROTC program by turning in an application and completing this process.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussions? I think it's great that you'll have a Navy program at Walker Valley, and then Bradley will have an Army program. So I think that's great. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is policy review. Ms. Vicki Bailey.
Well, Chairman Lee, let me find it. I thought I was finished. It's the next to the last one. Okay, this is interscholastic athletics. And a little bit of a background, Mr. Lovinggood and I, or Dr. Lovinggood and I, were having a conversation about some issues dealing, just in general, and specifically with athletics. So in talking with TSBA, we started looking at our policy 4.301, and we found that it needed to be updated. There, the main difference, which needs to be added, and is state law, in the first paragraph, adding student athletes shall only be allowed to participate in athletic activities or events that align with the student's sex indicated on his or her original birth certificate. I'm not sure, Dr. Cash, when that passed, but was that last year, or?
Yeah, Ms. Bailey, that was last year.
Okay. And we are adding that to this policy. Ms. Phillips and I have looked through this. Most of the other things are minor. We did add with the recommendation from TSBA, the section on severe weather, and that comes out of the public, Public Acts of 2021. So my recommendation, or my motion, is to accept TSBA's recommendation with those changes and accept policy 4.301.
Second.
Got a second? A motion by Ms. Vicki Bailey and a second by Dr. Lovinggood. Do you have any discussions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the school safety report. And I will need a restatement because this portion of our meeting will be closed. Pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 496804, any meeting concerning school security, the district-wide school safety plans or building-level school safety plans shall not be subject to open meeting, shall not be, subject to open meetings, laws compiled in Title 8, Chapter 44. Though closed to the general public, reasonable notice shall be provided to the general public prior to such meeting. The board shall discuss, shall not discuss or deliberate on any issues or subjects during the meeting. So at this time, we will go into a closed session with Mr. Scotty Hernandez, and then our board will report back to the meeting, and we will have announcements and agenda items for the next board meeting, and then we will adjourn. So at this time, board, will we please exit for the safety meeting?
School safety report. And so the last few items on our agenda are the next is announcements. The June board meeting has been moved to Thursday, June the 16th at 5:30 and we will not have a meeting in July. Are there any other announcements?
June, are we going to swear the board members in? So the new board members will be sworn in in June.
Okay. Alrighty. Are there any agenda items for the next board meeting that anybody would like to add?
I was just planning on saying we need to talk about it.
Well, I don't know Patty. Oh, I do. I have a whole package that Patty traced me. I haven't looked at it.
I'm trying to add those to you.
So if there is nothing else, the meeting is done.
Okay, we need a picture.